And in just looking at the workload, our break and fix environment right now does about 220 tickets a month. And that's in addition to all of our maintenance jobs and our project work that we're doing for the large-scale projects that we have. It utilizes the time of everybody on the IT staff at one point or another to answer some of these calls. We've been able to automate a lot of responses, but it's left a kind of a hole from our customers' eyes that they don't see IT face-to-face. They put in a ticket and it takes three or four days sometimes for it to be able to get to that ticket because we're working off a backlog and they don't stop coming in while we're still trying to work off some of the problems that are bigger than others as they come in. And so they, it's a, it's a, some of it's perception, but some of it is reality. And the ability for us to be proactive, to put a face for IT into each of the different facilities one day a week, to do that break and fix, to, to deal with the issues that some departments kind of store up, a broken printer and a computer that's not working and something else that's going wrong, and Dalton or one of our other staff will show up to work on a bigger problem and then, oh, while you're here, I've got this and this and this and this and this to do. And so all of a sudden, what he thought was going to take an hour, he's there for the rest of the day and then more work tickets backlog because of things like that. This is going to allow us to be proactive, it's going to allow us to deal with those issues, and I'm hoping that it'll, it'll give us that presence with the departments that they're very clearly letting us know they want.
Two of the more needy departments are sitting out there right now and...
Point at them.
Well, they're public safety. And, and we hear about it and we can't get to them. We have one Dalton, I shouldn't say that name, we have one...
One...
IT break and fix specialist.
Right now, yes.
And this would be a lower pay grade, but at least person that can get out there and serve the, it's not a sexy job, it's not police and fire, out there saving lives, but it's, it's more of the internal function that we...
Yes, it is.
Well, I guess...
Computer's broken, you are in a dire need.
Actually, to a police officer it is because their office is their car.
Yeah.
So, this person needs to get out there and, and relieve some of the burden so that we can fix the computer applications and everything else that, that happens and help replace the computers as, as needed.
And one other thing that I'll just put out there that it also does is, as we've, as we've moved the systems analyst position that is currently occupied by Dalton, that, the position also does our distribution of new equipment. And so we're ordering 35, 30 to 35 computers a year that we've got to dedicate time to distributing that equipment as well. Bringing this position in is also going to create an entry-level learning position that as the people that are in the, the systems analyst positions now possibly move up or move on, you know, depending, they'll at least be, it will have somebody that's trained up and able to, to kind of take over some succession as well, instead of having to rely completely on the outside every time something like that should happen.
My husband makes me do that at the Apple Store. I make an appointment for one thing and then I try to bring in like four or five devices and they don't buy it. You gotta make one appointment per device, it doesn't work that way.
As I recall, when, at the Florida League of Cities, there were some, a topic of comparing sizes of IT departments in different cities, and we certainly have a very small IT department compared to a lot of other municipalities our size, so commend you for that. Also, I hope this keeps the server up.
Yeah.
So that, you know, I was doing emails the other day and it's like, all of a sudden I can't send emails and it's like, and then a couple hours later, then all of a sudden I get the, the servers back up and it's like, you know, so I think we've got, hopefully the funds that we're expending will help fix that problem too.
It will because it'll allow those people to respond more immediately to those server issues that we have instead of having to finish up something they're working with somebody else on and then getting to them. They'll be able to dedicate more attention to those higher-level jobs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can we take a break?
Yes. How many more slides do you have?
Um, not many. Let's see, one.
I know, we need to take a...
Like four, four.
Okay. Well, we're gonna take a quick break now then, and then we'll finish. So it's 11:02, we'll come back at 11:10.
Even if you're not on.
No, I was 11 and we are back in session.
Right to the house.
So, just bringing back where we were at with the ending reserves that were available for allocation, if you were to approve all the positions as they've been presented, we currently would see where we would come at for fiscal year 19, the remaining reserves that could be used for other items. So you're about 1.6 there. So I guess we would ask at this time if all the positions or which positions would be approved to add it to the fiscal year 19 budget.
As a proposal.
As a proposal.
As a proposal at this point in time. We plan to add these in for your consideration when you adopt a tentative millage in July.
Do you want a motion on this or...
No.
Okay.
A consensus, right?
No, unless, unless somebody has a, I was gonna say if somebody has a heart attack. No, 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 no. If somebody has a heartburn with, with any of these, we'd like to know now.
I think these are very modest requests.
Yeah.
If anything, I think they're too modest.
I would also say that the ending reserves available, I think we should be very prudent about that and perhaps hold any other thing in abeyance or something because I think we don't know what's coming up and we talk about, we, we want more reserves.
Well, we're not done yet.
Yep, there's...
Couple more slides.
I know.
So it's a yes. Thank you. We did, um, Aqua is here and, but their second-year proposal came to a total of 111,000, so we just wanted to highlight that and see if you had any questions on that program.
I have a concern about spending 111,000 on this and spending 75,000 on an RFP for the Gilchrist Park Activity Center. I would like to see the money allocated to fund the Citizens' Master Plan update. I think it would, it's much better serving the community as a whole and I think that it's something we absolutely have to do, which is currently unfunded. And that would be my recommendation for those two costs because I do believe that the Gilchrist Park Activity Center is going to be part of the overall future expansion and development of the city and, and the west end of Gilchrist Park. And rather than hire a separate firm that will come in and just work on the plan for that, why would we not incorporate that into the Citizens' Master Plan Charette process and find out what people in the community really want to see?
So you're not saying abandon it, just wrap it into...
Yep.
A detailed item?
And use this money as well.
I disagree with that. I think that if we're gonna do this with year two, we might as well have, just have an indecision budget because we, in deciding year one, we decided year two. I mean, it is pointless to take this out now because otherwise we shouldn't have done a branding process in the first place.
Well, I don't, I don't feel it's money well spent.
I think it's very well, and we all decided unanimously to go against, I mean, to go for it. And so for us to make decisions then immediately come out of them, I mean, we're talking about wasting $200,000 for no purpose whatsoever.
Well, I think we have a communications manager that's capable of marketing the city for us and I think that's what the ultimate goal was supposed to be, was to hire her to do that. And, and I think that we should let her do that now. I think that was part of the ultimate overall long-term goal. So I think she's capable of doing it if we give her the opportunity to do it, and I don't know that we need an outside firm to tell her how to do her job.
Oh, no, they're augmenting her in the same way that the TDC is able to do an extremely good job with promoting themselves, they also hire Aqua. And we know very personally, they've been able to give results that are far greater than it could have if you had a single individual doing it. This is just a communications plan and again, we did agree to this. I mean, this, to try to come out of this now means we would just pretty much throw other money out the window.
Well, we didn't all agree on it, but okay.
We voted unanimously on that.
I'm with Jaha, it was a plan, I think we need to execute the plan and just to remind everybody, it's been in our strategic plan for a very long time and it was unfunded for a very long time and then we decided to move forward and, and take action on it. So I'm with Jaha on that. Gary?
I think that the type of process that, that Aqua's helping us with is not, is not as tangible unfortunately as, as some other types, but this is year two, we've got, we're ready to come out the gate. This is the year that we should start seeing some meat from the process. And I think that we don't want to stutter-step here, I think we need to go forward with it.
Yeah, I've been involved with the process for many years and while I understand exactly what you're talking about Lynn, I, I would like to see the communications manager more out in the public with us as we're, because I know that's part of the job description is to help put a face to the, of the city. So I welcome the communications manager out with us at the chamber meetings and other events like yesterday when we had the ribbon cutting. I, I think that those are things that the, you know, Brian Gleason was there from the county, I think that's something that, definitely an event in the city that we want to promote because it's an asset to the community. So those are all opportunities that, that happen all the time. But I think we need that coaching from Aqua in, in the strategic sense of where we're going with this. And, and we made this commitment, it's a plan, it's, we've studied this for a long, long time and I think it's, it's where we need to be headed, so.
Okay.
Let's support it.
So just to sum everything up regarding some of our unfunded alternatives right now, again, we're at the 1.6 that's available for allocation. One of the big unknowns at this time is the master plan and the cost on that. So as that moves forward and we have a number, funding that would be probably through these reserves. The pay plan study implementation, again, we just finished that process, we're just starting to get the recommendations in for the implementation. This number, this range here, 100,000 to 600,000, I'm so sorry, but this is citywide, so, but as you know, the general fund is a big portion of our city, so it wouldn't be the full amount that would go towards the general fund. Again, use of reserves for 2020, as we've done in the past, as we develop the rest of the pro forma in the out-years, we'll come up with the 20, especially with these new positions in there and see where we're at and funds may be needed to, again, if you so desire, like, put that money in the budget already as use of reserves for the future. Increase minimum reserves over 8% is an option as well. And then IT future project needs, which we would be coming back to with some projects there. Again, the amount is to be determined.
Isn't our policy to do a half a percent every year?
Yes, so we're doing half a percent right now, but it has been expressed that some would like to increase that.
accelerate that, okay.
So it's in there as an option, not, is anything there? So that takes care of the main general fund and then the only other item we have left is the lot mowing assessment, which is part of the general fund. The contractor may increase the rate 3%. They did take that option last year in fiscal year 18, so, and then personnel salaries, our budget increased 3%. So with that increase, we would propose that the lot mowing assessment increase from 165 to 170 to cover the additional costs.
That's fine.
That's kind of a no-brainer.
I think the price is too low, there should be a couple bucks in for the city. This is such a good deal for somebody that doesn't take care of their lot.
And that was the final slide.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
We will be back to you in June with utilities and canal maintenance, correct?
Yes, I believe utilities will probably be the first meeting and canal will probably be the second meeting. We're still finalizing the things, but that's what we're looking at.
Dave moved out of the office.
He is out of the office, I am in there. Still moving my stuff over now, but I am working in that office.
Okay, we know where to find you now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next we have unfinished business. The first is the master plan draft request for proposal. Oh, you want to switch it?
I, I thought maybe if we could switch and do the Harbor Walk option, A or C, it's probably not going to take long to discuss that. Put that either way.
Are they gonna go cry?
I don't know.
I don't think they're crying.
Well, temporarily not.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager. And last council meeting, Mitchell Austin presented to you the proposal for the area two A and B and it was limited, it ended up coming down to option A or option C for parking area, so... If we're looking at the parking by Gilchrist Street, the area originally in the base plan did not have the parking lot that exists today remaining in it. So area A will cost $30,000 and we will have a new, up-to-date and compliant parking area. Currently, if you recall, the parking that exists today is not compliant and we would need to make it ADA compatible and then we'd have to have the proper distance for the drive aisles and the parking spaces identified properly. So we'd have additional 18 spaces from the, as opposed to the base plan which had zero in the park, but it had four additional ones on the outside on RETA. So here we'll have a total of 23 parking spaces in that area under option A. We'll have a total of three of eight trees lost and then of course we'll have the off-site vendor, the vendor will be off-site on that parking area. The proposed option C is a hybrid of option A and the base plan. And what that proposes is to push the proposed parking back into the park and then put, keep the additional four spaces on RETA. The cost to do that is going to be $71,000. We will have 22 spaces, so for four additional spaces on RETA, keeping that, we double the price. And then we have the vendor area still remaining as well. So your options are in front of you and...
We lose six more trees.
We lose six more trees.
I'm with A. Gary?
I say save, save the trees in 40, 41,000 dollars.
A.
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 Option A it is.
Okay, I didn't think that was gonna take long.
Yeah, but you have inside information we don't have.
That's correct. I'm in a better mood now.
Okay, ready for the next?
Yeah.
Staff was asked also at the last meeting to bring back a draft for review for your input on the, we're calling it a citywide master plan, but it, it started out as an update to the Citizens' Master Plan that was done in 2005 with the majority of the projects that were proposed in that plan. It's time to look at the city again and increase our vision of what we, where we want to go in the next 10 years or so. So before you, for your review was the proposal that staff put together for, for discussion and wanted to hear what your input was, were there things that you want deleted, you want added?
I, I think to some degree, the way we're doing our conversation, it is diverting us from our responsibility. What I mean by that is that to some degree, I feel we're in a moment of, almost like we're like a referendum committee of some sort. And then the thing is, by statute, when it comes to us and our, by our role, when it comes to quality digital hearings, we, we have to vote according to common substantial evidence by licensed experts who are deemed expert. Yet we're aiming to do exactly which according to case law is, is really not legal. I mean, according, I mean, we're, we're looking at making decisions based on perceived popular opinion, which denies a resident's actually the very best qualified advice for governing the city. What I mean by this is that we, when in every case in any other government, even looking at F dot anyone else like that, you licensed professionals provide councils and the public with options derived from the best practices in their field, like i.e. urban planning, architecture, engineering. Not unlicensed people giving licensed people direction in the Charette process, hoping that some sort of option based on best practices is somehow going to come out of this process. In, in the practice of medicine, this would be unacceptable. In the practice of engineering, it would be unacceptable. In the practice of developing an RO plant or water engineering, it would be unacceptable. And also in the practice of urban design. These are all fields that in the state of Florida, one must be licensed in order to practice discipline. And to be an expert, we, we actually have to, in terms of when we do our, our deliberations, they have to be based on ultimately expert advice. And I'm, I'm seeing that to some degree, what we're doing now is that we're, we're averting our responsibility in terms of, to the citizens, in terms of not being paralyzed by the fear of change and rather than proactively leaning into the change, rather so we can direct it, rather than being ostracized that put their heads in the ground hoping that danger goes away. But for the moment, I'll indulge us for a minute. I, I just, I mean, I mentioned this before, I recently went to a training at the Economic Development Administration, it was on recovery and resiliency for cities. And it talked about preparing cities for not only national disasters, but also economic disasters. And in that, they asked us to really try our best to rise above short-term politics and truly care about the residents and carefully consider what's going to actually sustain them, provide them with a high quality of life. With this said, I think we can build upon what was the 2005 master plan, which gave a very comprehensive vision, moving to part two of that effort. It's a very large body of data. We just did the Aqua branding study, which actually was a 2017 update to the community's vision. And I find that, that there's no reason to look at spending half a million dollars on a redundant study when we have that part of the data. Now, one very essential component that we are missing again is respective of the business community, especially that of the down, the remaining downtown businesses. We need to know what our current business environment actually is like, not what it's perceived as like. Also, and this again can be done very simply through a city council workshop like workshops are done, where business owners are invited to share their testimony with the city council, followed by a council discussion of testimonies. I find that if we have these three pieces, that we have 2005 master plan, we have the Aqua study, we have this from the workshops, we then can actually design a study which is actually more technical in nature than existing framework from a true technical standpoint. What I mean by that is like, doing really, and this is from the beginning, a necap analysis of what business, business sectors are best suited to the city. A list of the downtown business developments that were either neither, nearly in existence or, or nor slated for development before Hurricane Charlie and which actually came about as the master plan. A determination of what, of what level of commercial activities needed downtown to create a critical mass. How to employ new urbanism. This is something that we talked about in the master plan, which I'll give the quotes and then I say this because we, we need to frame this, that this is what we say we are. The philosophy is to combat the endless creeping invasive sprawl that engulfed millions of acres of U.S. planners who modeled their developments on the small towns of early America, which compact downtowns, walkable streets, diverse housing stock and plentiful public spaces. Also, we need to make a determination of the rate of increasing residential taxes to maintain the current level of services if the ratio of commercial activity in the city is allowed to remain as it is. Also, we need to do a actual comparison of the master plan branding study and workshop and compare them with the LDRs. And also, and then followed by a series of renderings of cityscapes based on the conclusions of those three studies and staff recommendations to be accompanied by draft LDRs with this. While this is being done, we should do an outreach campaign that should, but should be facilitated to promote more citizen participation in the public review process. And with this, we need to not only increase the number of retirees that we have, but we also need to reach more elderly, persons with disabilities, young families, working people and business owners. This expanded base of residents will then be provided with civic education symposiums on Florida zoning law and best practices in urban planning. Part of the necessity of this level of outreach came to me because after the last time we had that discussion on the Waterfront Activity Center, I, I discovered that the Bayfront Dancers, they're a group of seniors, 200, that meet twice a week, who've been meeting in there, they, they do country line dancing for the last 10 years, they're one of the oldest standing people there and they, they were not included as stakeholders. And so it shows that we are not, we're not reaching everyone, but we're making assumptions based on who the community's saying is really not. We, we need to actually actively expand our public. Secondly, in having cultivated this, this greater group, grouping of our residents and in, after we are able to have this kind of actual symposiums on Florida zoning law and best practices in urban planning, then by this time, the renderings and draft LDRs should be ready for review. At that point, our citizens would then be empowered to actually be able to really participate robustly in the process. To have Charettes before that is, is, I, I find to be ridiculous and actually insulting to, to the residents of the city. I say this because no other part of our city governance where we ever have non-licensed people actually create the initial plans for us to break on. And one thing about why I say this level of engagement is necessary, especially at this time, is that in talking about bringing back our downtown and talking about, and despite considerable support for our branding process, the residents expressed concern about, you know, basically bringing back the downtown. And so with this, I found that in talking to people, a lot of times it's not about a fear of change, but it's actually, actually not having been provided adequate background information on Florida zoning laws and the best practices in urban design and architecture. And, and with this said, in the city, we have a very long pattern of people being very, very opposed to the very things that they love the most afterwards. We're looking at Fishman's Village, we're looking at Lashley Crab House, the, the Event Center, Vivanti, Buttonwood's Village, even the former 7-Eleven. These are things people about went crazy against and they're things people love. And the reason why these things were able to be approved was, wasn't because council members didn't hear what people were saying, it's because at that time, they made their decisions based on competent substantial evidence, which was required for the hearing. And so they were able actually to make a determination what would be in the best interest because they had expert advice and guidance with this. One, one thing also I find, and we, again, we need to really empathize with our residents and truly understand where they're coming from, is that I find that oftentimes residents who have moved here from other states actually believe the Florida law is similar to the states where they come from. Florida zoning law is far more comprehensive than most states in the Union. And so with this, I mean, since the 1990s, all zoning changes have to go through a process of quality digital hearing. It's not random, it's not arbitrary, it's not so-and-so can get someone's brother through the process and just because I like him. It's, it's a very, very strict process in this state and I think that we need to let our residents know that though they may have had certain life experiences where they moved from, this is Florida and Florida has a very, very different set of laws. And with, with this said, we, I think that with this process of civic education, giving our residents a true, true background in state zoning laws and the best practices on how cities are actually designed, they're then able to really give critical input on public comments to design renderings and LDRs that we then be, which would have been created by expert planners, architects and engineers who would have worked from the very extensive data that was provided by the master plan, the branding study, business workshop and our urban design staff who know probably more than anyone about what's happening here. And so, so with this, it's like, I think we have to really understand that we right now are building the architectural and economic foundations for PanaGorda's next 50 years, not next five years. Like any other great city in America, we need to hire the very best people, the best planners, the best architects, the best engineers, the best economists, to provide our residents with the best solutions. There's no way we should leave this to just people guessing at it. We should have licensed, like any other city in the country, our residents deserve the very best. And I think that we need to focus on effectiveness, not on appeasement. At this point, we need to think what is going to be effective for our city. And I find that our, we have experts to provide us with viable options of LDRs illustrated by design renderings that are based on best practices in urban design. Residents who are empowered with more education on, on our zoning laws and on best practices will be able to provide the, the very best comments on these selections so that our LDR framework can be accommodated to meet the best long-term needs of the city. And also I find that with this said, we will be able to then rebuild our downtown with the appropriate architecture for accentuating our historic identity while providing the optimum environment for business to thrive downtown. We, we're out of balance now with who we are. What I mean by that is that we've always had a beautiful balance of old Florida, Gulf Coast waterfront living and the yearly homecoming of our seasonal residents that makes us such a special place. I, I think that, I really, and I say I move, that we do nothing further regarding master plan and i.e. spending upwards of half a million dollars on unbudgeted funds on a master plan until we do a few things. One, until there's been an assessment by the staff of the actual effectiveness of the first one. Two, that we've had a council workshop with business owners so that we have a complete set of data for which a professional design firm can work with in the event that we do decide we want to go forth with budgeting half a million dollars for a second master plan. And, and with this, I, I say this because I think that what we actually need, we need an economic study on what businesses will work in PanaGorda. We need renderings of cityscapes that our urban design staff have already been working on because they've already conducted updated survey on a citizen's vision for the city in last year's budgeted expenditure for an Aqua marketing study. We need a cultivation of expanded public constituencies such as the elderly, persons with disabilities, young families, working people, business owners and civic education seminars on Florida zoning law, best practices in urban design. And with this, I've had some, some preliminary discussions even with leadership of Team PanaGorda who'd be very, very willing to even raise funds to do that public outreach, but I find that, that we've just gone off the track somewhere and not really doing our job. I think that we need to come back, because this all came out of a discussion on building heights and we've just gone all over the place. And, and I think that we have to acknowledge, we just spent money on a study asking what our residents, what they want. And, and so to go through a process which would basically be guided by non-licensed people, when we, when we, our residents deserve the very best and when we're talking about designing a city for the next 50 years, we're not... we're not, our residents actually deserve to have the best, not to play some game where we're just playing appeasement with our people. We need to actually do our duty and really care for our people and then take care of them as opposed to playing a game with them.
So your proposal was to?
My, I'm moving that we do nothing regarding a master plan until such time that we've done an assessment of the effectiveness of the first one, and we've done some council workshop with the business people. I think that if we acknowledge that we have to acknowledge that our city is, is, is greater than only the loud voices we hear. I think we have to get past, we're in a certain place in our mind where the squeaky wheel is, and we're not. I don't think we're doing good on our people by that.
So that was your, that was your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Long motion.
Very long motion. I mean, back to your idea of the business workshop, which I supported the last time. Do you, do you honestly think they're going to come and speak freely, do you think? I mean, I'm willing to give it a chance, but my hesitation is that, and, and so if they do or they don't, I mean, if, if, since you've been in the mix with that and talking to people, if you really think that they're going to come and say, then yes, because we really can't move forward until we even know what, what goes down there, what, what's going to be in those buildings, whatever size they are. Maybe they're only one-story, maybe they're two-story. I mean, that's the piece that I agree with you that we're missing because obviously the plans that have been approved in the past, say the City Marketplace PD, that never came to fruition. That's 10 years old, I would guess, or then some. And those, those were like 10, some of those buildings were 10 stories high. So that's, that's not going to happen. I mean, I can, I can tell you that's not going to happen, especially with the...
Nothing to feel it.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would be okay with the business workshop. Let me hear from everybody else.
I've had a number of business people actually speak out to me and tell me that they don't really feel like, they feel like they're being heard, and that they really don't see that there needs to be something special. You know, I tried to listen to everything that you said, with all respect, but I think that the intent here, we already know how much of the citizens' master plan that's been fulfilled. We have that information. Citizens, Team Pana Gorda and the city have been, have sat down, I can name the names of the people who did it, and went through and actually identified what projects were in place, what has been done. And, and they have that information. We would not hire anybody who's not. Jaime Correa is a well-credentialed, renowned urban planner with, with credentials that are amazing. We wouldn't hire anybody to help us take that next step and help bring things together. We have the information from the Chesapeake study. There is an economic development group that works through the chamber. We have Lucien Piers and the whole economic development team, and we have those at our fingertips to help us. And, and I think that to have someone come and help us, the, the information that Aqua has provided is wonderful information, but it's not the same kind of information that, that is in the citizens' master plan. And so I think for us to just not move forward is, is, is taking a step backward. And so, that's the first thing I'll say, and I'll let somebody continue on.
Well, to answer you, yes. The staff has gone through and checked the boxes. Did we do this? Yes. Was this feasible? No. This is ongoing. This was the county. I mean, they've done that cursory, check the boxes on the completed task, but I think what Jahah's saying, and I would agree, what was effective? What was the effectiveness of those decisions?
But that can come out of then, this next step, and we can take a look at that. Where are we now? And I see that expertise as building on this.
Half a million dollars later, we, we need to, we need to assess where we are right now. We don't know where we are. The Chesapeake study is 10 years old. I mean, we don't know anything where we are right now. And when it comes to business people, I'll tell you, I, I, I work the downtown very much. About everybody I've talked to very much wants to be heard. I, I don't know the people you're talking to. That's, that's, that's a very, very minority perspective. I think people very much don't feel heard by us.
Gary?
My expertise is in water treatment. It's not in urban design. But I do know what a strategic plan is. And we're, we're talking about a master plan here. If I were to retitle this, it would be a master strategic plan. I think what we, the work that was done in 2005 was absolutely incredible. However, where we dropped the ball as a community was in 2006, '07, '08, '09, '10 and '11. Because a strategic plan is supposed to be a living plan. It's not supposed to be a cast in stone, it's good forever, because times do change. And they change over, over years, generations, et cetera. I think we need, when, as, when we go out for a proposal, assuming we do, if we go out for a proposal for that, we should add a couple of things in our evaluations. One is, that's not, this is just generic, one that's not in here specifically, but they probably would do it, would be when the, when the plans get developed, what 3D renderings would be based on certain type of architectural criteria. And this can be done very well. We saw a local citizen do this regarding Henry Street Park. So that we can have a visual representation on where we go with this as a community. I'm not talking about as, as just our body, but as a community. But also, when we go to put, go out for a proposal, you, when you, from my experience, experiences in business, which isn't government, and I understand that, customers would put out proposals, and they would want us to bid an apple. But there was always the ability to add addendums that if we thought the orange made better sense. And that's where I think we could, if we go out, request for a proposal, we could glean some information from perpetual proposals. Not necessarily take the lowest proposal, take the lowest with highest value proposal. Because if somebody comes to with us and said, okay, here's how we bid your scope, but if we were to do it, we would add X, Y, Z, and A and B, so that we can have that kind of, because this is not our expertise. It's, we have great people in urban design, but even their scope is, has been more narrow than what we would hopefully find with a credentialed consultant in this, in this standpoint. And Jahah, your point is very well taken, that it's sometimes we have to go out and seek who the stakeholders really are. They may not come forward to us, whether it's the line dancing group that's been 10 years. Yes, they are a stakeholder, and they're doing their line dancing, and they're, they're happy, and, and maybe need to be approached, they need to be gleaned out in addition to the folks that just have more passion naturally. Not all of us have the same passions on, on issues as others, but that doesn't mean that the others shouldn't have, have sufficient voice. So I think that as we go out for this, we should also be asking in the proposal that this is our apple, but if this isn't, and please bid this, but if this isn't what you know that we should be doing, explain to us what you believe with your expertise, what you should, we should be doing, and how we should be doing it. And that's how we should evaluate it. Whenever you go out with these things, whether it is with what we're doing with Aqua or something like this, if it's going to be successful, and I believe Aqua's going to be successful for us too, in the long term, there's an ROI. There is a return on investment. It doesn't cost you a half a million dollars. Over the long haul, instead, it, it gives you a profit of X number of dollars, but you have to spend something upfront and, and with some faith and understanding that you go forward. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the 50-year and even 100-year. You've heard me say that about the water plant. I actually see that as a 100-year asset potential. So anyway, I understand your point. I actually agree with your point on, on various issues, but I think that we need to bring an expert in, in our scope to help us, guide us on how to do that expertly. Okay, I've said enough.
Mayor, may I allow our procurement manager just to answer some of those suggestions that Mr. Wine made?
Marion Pace, procurement manager. Listening through the discussion, this process would be guided by the Florida State Statute 285.055, which is the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act. Whenever we're hiring any type of professional services of an engineer, architectural, landscape architect, and those type of professional positions, we have very strict guidelines that we will need to follow. And basically, we provide to the potential offers our objective, our scope of what we see. Now, they're going to be taking what we see and expanding on that and proposing a project approach or scope of work in their offer to us. We cannot request price in these types of solicitations, so that's done after the fact. But the other thing we can do is work with the minimum qualification requirements. I heard about suggesting maybe each, the firm must have had completed eight charrettes to where we can identify what type of lead businesses we want to lead this process, how many years of experience, and then also, once we go through the initial evaluation process based on their written seminal, we are required to either have an interview or presentations with the shortlisted firms, and then we go through the process.
Are we required to always take the lowest bid?
We, we will not know who the lowest bid is. Once we develop a shortlist after the presentation...
We develop the shortlist before we get the, okay, now I understand.
And then we get prices from the top-ranked firm.
We can ask them to put their expertise in the, in the process of developing that shortlist. They can make suggestions to us.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they, they can, in their scope of work, they're going to say, well, this is what you envision? This is what we are proposing to do to achieve that goal.
That's pretty much what I was saying.
Mm-hmm. It's just the price, we can only discuss price with the number one ranked firm.
That's fine.
So then at that point, Marion, what are we obligated, how obligated are we to follow through? If the number is too big or too high, or the scope is too broad and we don't agree with?
Once we go through the process and we start negotiating with the top-ranked firm, we can tell them where they're maybe too heavy in their scope. We negotiated the hourly rates, and they give us a proposal based on the scope that we develop for, for the project, for the, for the master plan. And then if that fee does not come in within our budget, we can either decide to abandon with no obligation, or we can go to the number two firm and open up negotiations with them.
I mean, one thing I would say too that, that is missing from this, which I thought we talked about last time, is that framing it within the staff recommendations that we already have on the table. And I don't really see that. And I think that's where Jahah, you're kind of pointing at this as like too open-ended, so to say. But really, I mean, we, I thought we said that we would like those recommendations and the, and the draft changes to be, you know, the focal point of some of this. So is that in there? Is that understood?
We believe that under the tasks that we brought to you, that we could discuss the additions of items that we may have not understood totally under the economic analysis. The business workshop, maybe we can include that in there and define it more. This was just the rough draft to get the discussion started on where we wanted to go and how we wanted to formulate the process.
I mean, I think it should be more closed-ended, but I don't know the wording that I would use to do that. Jahah?
Like one thing, what Gary's saying is that if we're going to do this, there needs to be, ROI needs to be like the purpose of it. It can't just be to take us out of the discussion on downtown so that we can just make more time go away. It, it actually needs to have like an outcome. Like, let's say if this is actually a 50-year strategic plan, it needs to actually be that. And our urban design staff has actually done tremendous work understanding this, and we built from what they built this, that's one thing. I, I just, I just find that at this moment, we have a lot of forces that are moving despite our wanting to put our head in the sand. Like, we have Martin Luther, we have Sunseeker, we have opportunities right now. Enough energy is moving that if we ourselves were proactive, we have a very good opportunity to just utilize the energy in the air to really become our best selves. But like, if this really is just, I mean, like, for example, the rule in there saying that we have to delay this until the season, I find it highly offensive to, to full-year residents. At no point would any northern city ever, 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 ever close during the winter. So because our residents are down in Florida. It's absolutely ridiculous. I find that the fact, we, these kind of things show this is, this is not what we say it is. If our intentions really are to really do a real plan for where we're going, that's one thing. But this is just, this is some other social thing that's not really serious. I think if it's a serious thing, it's going to have a serious ROI, and it's based on expertise that our staff has already put together, I think I could be behind it. But otherwise, this is like a joke. We're just playing with our people.
And truly, from what you said, this is a 10-year plan right here. This is what we're asking, five plus. I mean, in my mind, like even the Chesapeake, 2007, you read a lot of that, it's obsolete. I mean, they have like, you know, videotape rental stores. I mean, that's gone. I mean, a lot of those things are gone. They're just nonexistent anymore, so. And, and some of the things that, that they have in there have filled in, the infill in the, the space that's, that's around. So I don't know that we have to be that heavy, but we do need to, we do need to find out what the needs are as far as what would work here. Lynn, do you want?
I, I do think we need to bring in an outside firm that has a fresh set of eyes to look at this situation and help us, guide us for the future. And we, we have a huge amount of citizenry that really want to be involved in this planning process. I think it's imperative that we include those people who do live here and, and live here year-round. But I also think it's imperative that we include the people who are only here part year because they pay more taxes than the people that live here year-round. And, you know, since our citizens do pay 90% of the taxes in the city, I think it's imperative that that be part of the planning process. I do think that, you know, it's fine to have all these ideas, and, and it's fine to have Aqua doing their marketing, and it's fine to have the urban design department doing their, their renderings and that sort of thing. But this has got to be a guiding tool going forward that someone from the outside, only someone from the outside can bring fresh ideas from other communities that are similar to ours. You know, we had slides in the presentation at the town hall meeting of a blighted community in West Palm Beach. That's not what we are. We don't have a blighted community. And, and an urban planner that's familiar with other towns similar to ours will tell us that. They will bring in those comparison ideas from communities that are similar to us. So I think it's imperative that we move forward with this plan, getting, getting somebody hired and start the process. But I do think we need to spread it out over a period of time where we can involve everyone that lives here, even if it's only part year. And that's just my opinion about it.
Well, I want to see, that's, I mean, you actually are saying what I'm saying, is that if we were to get someone who actually has that skill set, I would want them to write us our ideas, not just having them facilitate residence charrettes. I think we're wasting our people's minds. Really, like example, FDOT, when they did, I'd go to FDOT things. Remember they have their new highway stuff and the new rest areas? They don't have people give their ideas about how the rest areas should be designed?
Yes, they do.
No, 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 they don't. What they do is, no, they come out with, they have designs first, then you comment on what that, on which ones, out of the choices they give you, they, you don't, to say first. They, they have a bunch of choices, say A through F, and they have different choices. And then residents come in, and then, then they comment on that, and then it's adjusted off of something designed, off of best practices. It's not from nowhere land.
Their process, their process starts with resident input from the very beginning, even before they get to that point. And so it is a very inclusive process. And the, the master plan process before that happened in 2005 was a very inclusive process. And, and that welcomed everyone to participate in the process, whether it was a business owner or a resident, it was everyone. And, and it's, it's providing that input, but yet the expert...
If the order of...
The expert then pulled it together and provided that expertise on, on what is reality, what should work, what shouldn't work. And, and I see that that's, it's, I think it's going to work. I think it's going to be a beautiful opportunity for this community to really come together and, and bring everyone together. The one thing I, I see that the words are missing from this, and I don't know where it would go, but to me, an overarching goal is to preserve the historic character of this community. And I think that that, if that, that vision, we can embrace that vision and it's incorporated somehow in here, then it will help us as a community. I think you've been mentioning Jahah, the historic character of the community is, is critically important. And I think that's what people are really wanting us to embrace. And if we embrace that historic character of the community, then whatever comes out of that, I think will really be grounded.
And I think where Jahah is going, I get the feeling, but, is that there's a sentiment out there that's against private property ownership, and that the citizens think that they can dictate what somebody can do with their private property. they can dictate what somebody can do with their private property. And I think, you know, we've heard veins of that, and I think that is where we have to sit up here and we have to protect property rights, and we have to, you know, allow, allow people to use their property in a way that we think is sufficient for our city. And so, so many times, that's looked down upon, and, you know, it's just, it's a hard place to be in because we know we want development, but we want the right development, so how do we frame that? To me, this RFP here is too loose. I don't know how we tighten it up, but for me, I just feel like we could be spending a huge chunk of change and end up with something that's too lofty, too, too, too...
I think it, I think what happened to, when I read through this, staff took everything that we talked about, to your kudos, or listening, and tried to pull it all together and included a Chesapeake study and a this study and a that study. And it may be there are resources out there that we don't need to have it be so Chesapeake study-focused, but it can be more focused toward what, a more of an architectural vision.
I'm agreeing with that too, yes.
Amen.
Because I think it's, because we have those resources available, and I think they want to play.
And look at the effectiveness of the Sunloft Center, okay? That was the new urbanism. It still remains vacant.
No.
The office space.
No, they just filled as of the last two weeks because they had to change their business model from condos to apartments.
Yes.
But I'm talking about, they were dying.
No, it's full now.
I know this, I know the real...
I know the property manager, it's...
It's been two weeks.
It's just now full.
Two weeks.
Right.
They were dying, and they may never make their money back. And that's the thing, we need to hear from what it really is like, not in theory land. We actually need to know what our business owners actually need, because we're talking about preserving our historic city. That only can be if our city's alive. I mean, we can't just have the idea of an historic city.
That's the idea with these charrettes, is to provide opportunities.
But that's not, that's not the expertise. We need experts who actually know that. I mean, it's good, like, for example, we're talking about RO plan here. We're all not going to say, well, how we envision our RO plan and how water management should be. No, we have an actual water engineer give us first parameters, then we can comment on after that, but not having parameters and best practices, we're playing with ourselves and spending a lot of money.
But that's who we're going to hire. I mean, I go back to my Team Ponder Gorda days, and I look at Jaime Correa, and he's well-grounded. I mean, I look at that as an example of somebody who, with all of their credentials, is going to do exactly what you said.
But what was the effectiveness? That's, we have to examine...